Okay, we're on Zoom here. I'm just checking in with people who've signed up on Zoom on our Zoom connection. Felix is back. We'll get started at six. We have the live stream going and those captions is on. We will be calling people by name and asking if they want to make a comment in this case. So start off a little bit of some background. Once we get started, take a few people from the hearing room and then switch to Zoom. And go back and forth until we're done. So just sit tight there and we'll begin soon.
Mr. Newark, you're muted. We can't hear you.
Yes. Now you should hear me, right? Okay, so yeah, we've been here a long time, so I'm starting to get a little punchy here. Apologize for that. A lot of people joining on Zoom, so we may go to an opposite situation from the afternoon. So once we get settled in, I just wanted to mention why you guys are getting your seats. If you do wish to speak today, you'll need to fill out one of these forms or appearance slips are on the table. Put your name and if you want to speak today, check that box, speak now, yes. Then give your form back to commission staff. They'll get me the form. I'm keeping them in the order that we receive them. And if you don't want to speak, but you still want to comment. You can write your comment right on the form, hand it back. We'll give you some more pages if you need it. Or you can read, there's instructions here as well. I've had a file on comment online or any address if you want to mail the comment to us. Comments are due February seventeenth, so we need to get them in the office by February seventeenth. All right.
Thank you very much.
Kind of mesmerizing. Stop watching.
That's the word, thou, thou, thou. This is in English.
So we're just checking people in on Zoom. They'll come in a little bit.
Couple years.
All right, well, we're going to welcome everybody. It's time to start. Like I said, Michael Lu Mark administrative logic for the PSC. I'm neither a commissioner that makes the decision in this case or the applicant that's proposing this project, running a hearing. And my job is to create the record that the commissioners use, make the decision. So. Goes through me. We have a process where we get evidence from parties in the case. That'll be, and you'll see that coming to next week when we hold the party hearing session, I'll be receiving evidence from parties and commission staff. And that'll be one aspect of the records with the technical documents, the. The more, you know, the testimony from those expert witnesses. But on the other side, we have public comment and public comment process that's we're here to do today. Get your comment, your opinion on the case. The ideas, phones off, guys. Turn your ringers off. So you want to get your comment to the commissioners and they're going to read it and that's going to form. Be part of the information that they look at, make their decision. So. As we're doing here, get your comment to the commissioners. So I know we have people on both sides of this issue, pro and con. My job is to make sure everyone feels comfortable and gets treated with respect. They make their comment. They feel free to speak their mind. So we all want to be able to do that. So I'm going to ask that people refrain from either applauding a comment or booing a comment. It's happened before. It's no joke, but I want everyone to feel comfortable and not get intimidated by that. So. We'll definitely do that. Make sure everyone's being respectful of each other. Also, a couple of ground rules. You just want to be able to, when you're speaking, speak slowly and clearly. Do a lot better than I'm doing right now because it's the court reporter is creating the record for this case. So when you. What she types is going to be what the commissioners read. So if she can't hear you or if you're speaking too fast. It's not going to come through. So make sure that you speak slowly and clearly and no interrupting people when they're talking because then. She can't hear you, can't get the comment to the commissioners and the whole game's off. So. What we'll do is I'll have the appearance slips here so far. And the people on Zoom, we'll be checking in with them too, but I'll call your name in order that I got these slips. Have you come up to the chair, take the seat, I'll swear you in, have you state your name and just give us your opinion on the case. It's that simple. Just want to hear what you think. That's pretty much it. Most of you probably have been here in the afternoons. You know what I'm talking about. Yeah, so I think we get started, get the show on the road. We have everybody checked in here. So let's start with our first witness. Okay, they told me this name and I'm going to forget it now. So it's Christian Isaacson. Yes, win for me. Take a seat, swear you in, swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole. Do you swear? Do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, great. Give us your name and comment.
My name is Christian Isaacson. I live at two, two, four, one hundred and forty fourth Avenue. Union Grove, Wisconsin, which is right between the proposed site A for this new project. And the current existing natural gas power plant that is located on highway D and highway K R. So basically I would be able to look out my back window to see it. To the west, I can look out my front window and see it to the east if they build this one. I'm here today to state my opinion that no one has told any of the property owners in the area. Or anyone in the Union Grove area as to what will this do to the value of my property? What will this do to. Kids twenty, thirty, forty years from now attempting to sell the property after something happens to me, my wife and I. We have, we now have beautiful solar panels to the south of us. Which were put in over the course of the last six years. To alleviate the energy burden. They just tore down a perfectly good power plant in Pleasant Prairie. That they could have ran this to, that was already existing. The infrastructure was there. Site A makes perfect sense for We Energies and We Energies alone. They didn't do their due diligence when the pipeline for the gas was put in for the Foxconn project. To ensure that it went down to their existing facility where they already owned property and could have expanded on that facility. Instead, they want to build in an area now that is agricultural, right behind residential houses down my street. And just to be able to tap into that gas main, which is now underutilized because Foxon didn't, Foxconn did not come to fruition. That. Thinking that's not my fault that they didn't do their due diligence. And work together with the gas company to ensure that the pipeline would go past their property now. So my public comment is, and I know we're going to hear a lot from the unions. We heard a lot from the unions earlier today. About the jobs and the sustaining wages. And while that is great for the area and for local union workers. They don't have to live with the project for the next twenty, thirty years after it's done. Me and my family do. My neighbors do. So I just wanted to speak my opinion that we've heard it. Now, we heard it six years ago with the solar panels. This is going to alleviate the problem. We heard it twenty five years ago when they built the natural gas plant in the first place. Now we're hearing it again. Present day that they want to do this to the east. I'm not totally opposed to the project. I'm opposed to the placement of the project. And that's my public comment.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So you have Sean Coats. I'm just going to read a couple of names so you know if you're on deck. Louis Daniels and Daniel L. Gulliford. All right, raise your right hand. You swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Name and comment.
My name is Sean Coats. I live in Kenosha County in Town of Wheatland. Business representative for mill rights, local twenty-three, thirty-seven. We have a lot of journey level members and apprentices that are. Well trained in this type of work and just to kind of let you guys know what mill rights do because we're not a very well known trade. We work on industrial equipment. We work in the power generation industry. The, the highest train when it comes to the actual equipment that generates the power. We work on. Although it's turbine equipment and that's different than, than this exact project. The principles are the same. And we train not only here, but also have training in Las Vegas. We have one point three million square feet of training in which. A good portion of that is dedicated to learning that type of industry. And we really appreciate We Energies and the ability to hire union labor and we know why. We train. Better than, than anyone when it comes to this. This kind of project creates opportunities not only for our apprentices with journey level, but also apprenticeships, getting people into the trades. And giving them a hand up on, on life. And. You know, the industry as a whole has changed. And the reality is we must change to, to the future calls for more power. And the best way to do that is through not only renewables, but natural gas. And these rice units are, are a great way to bridge. The gap and, and provide the power for some of the industries that are going up in the area. In my opinion, this is a win-win-win. We meet the energy demand, provide learning opportunities for our apprentices. And local jobs with good paying benefits. And we have people right in the area that are ready to do this type of work. We have. Mill rights throughout the area that are friends, neighbors, and they're going to make the money and spend the money in the area. So that's why I'm speaking in favor of it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Louis Daniels. Then Daniel Gulliford.
Good evening.
Do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, name and comment.
Good evening. My name's Louis Daniels. I'm honored to represent the laborers local one thirteen. My name's Louis Daniels. I'm honored to represent the laborers local one thirteen, being a. Skilled union laborers profoundly transformed my life. I've gone, I went many, many years barely making ends meet, working a lot of hours. And now I'm able to spend more time with my family and help my children. I enjoy a consistent work schedule now with competitive wages. Yeah, I take a lot of pride in. Constructing the infrastructure that fuels our economy. That's why I'm here tonight to express my support. For the proposed natural gas plant in Paris. Although I currently work at the Microsoft Data Center. In Racine County. And each day when you head down like the freeway, you can see that there's a lot of people investing in this area. A lot of developments happening. We're going to need more energy. There's already solar plants and stuff here, but we're going to need like something that's consistent to. Back up the solar energy, just in case you've like, you have cloudy days or days without wind. Things like that. You need something consistent, especially with our winters being cold in the winter time. Yeah, as I mentioned, becoming a, a union member significantly improved my life and. I think it's a win-win situation. Thank you for your attention and. Yeah, advocate for the plant.
All right. Thanks very much. Daniel Gulliford and then Eric Stolz. Then we'll switch to some Zoom participants. Right hand. That's all right. Swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, go ahead. Name and comment.
Good evening. My name's Ben Gulliford or Daniel Gulliford. I am. Been a Paris resident for twenty-nine years. I've, over the years, I've done a lot of work to my house to get it where I wanted to be. And I'm a little upset that I was not even notified about this meeting. Particularly because it's right in my backyard. It comes up to the back of my property. Now, one of my neighbors, or actually two of my neighbors got a letter in the mail from the state. I never received it. Couple of their neighbors never received it, so I'm, I'm not prepared. I don't have a speech or nothing because I just shot here as fast as I could. I understand. About the labors and carpenters and electricians and whatnot. I understand. This is good for you guys. I'm a union carpenter. I'm ready to retire in two months. I bought this house with the intention of. Dying there or passing it on to my kids, my grandkids, blah, blah, blah. I'm very upset about it because. It's just. I mean, what do I do? My value of my property is going to go way down. It gives these guys jobs, but they don't have to live there. And I just think it's a big slap in the face to me. I, I, even if I wanted to sell my house, I can't now because I have to disclose this. I don't know what else to say. I mean, I'm glad I wasn't first on board because I was here at the end of the two o'clock meeting. I heard what a lot of people had to say. And I don't want to just repeat what people have said. My neighbor here, Christian Isaacson. I'm not going to repeat everything that he said because you got a lot of people here. You want to get this going, but I am very dissatisfied. I just feel I don't have a voice and what happened to the freedom of speech? And it's like nobody's listening to me. I mean, the town of Paris is just going to get swallowed up and disappear. And. Everybody that comes to my house, we have an annual party every year for twenty-nine years and everybody just loves it. And when we, we missed a couple of times with COVID. Everybody's calling, when's your party? When's your party? Because everybody loves to come there. It's not going to be the same anymore. I'm going to have this building right in my backyard, a hundred foot tall. They're talking about fifty decibel. Noise when, and the turbines are supposed to be only running when the doors are closed. But I can hear the interstate when the wind's blowing from the east. I can hear the drag strip when the wind's blowing from the west. This is right out my back door. So, I mean, I, I hear it with the workers. It's a job for you, but you don't have to live there. And one other thing I'm going to say, I'll make this short. When they were doing the solar panels, I almost got ran off the road. Three times a week from the construction workers. I mean, I turn onto, off of my road, I live on one hundred and forty-fourth, I turn onto A. And if I don't turn quick enough, they come barreling over that hill or they're coming the other way and they're veering off. Even further down the road at the S turn. I already went to the police department and I told them about this. They said they, they're undermanned. They cannot get. State troopers out there to park and watch the speed limits or how these guys drive. No offense. I mean, it might not be you guys. It could have been somebody else. But I got grandkids coming to my house. My kids are older now, but the grandkids, I got cats and dogs. One of them already got killed on the road, a cat and a dog. I mean, it doesn't mean that it was the construction workers. It could have been anybody, but the way they drive, I even asked. Police department if they could just deputize me. I could be there first thing in the morning and after work. Just to keep eyes on this to get the, the traffic slowed down. But I mean, it's just, and I'm not looking forward to this now because this is right out my back door. So that's all I really have to say.
All right. Well, thanks for making your comment.
Thank you.
Eric. Eric Stolz. All right, have a seat there. Raise your right hand. You swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Name and comment.
How you doing? My name is Eric Stolz. I currently work at Microsoft Data Center. The union one thirteen is one of the best things ever happened to me, a lot of my brothers and sisters in the union and my own sister, my blood sister. With this project, I do understand eyesores and stuff. But I believe the opportunity that this brings to your community and everyone else in Paris. People who are younger will see this project. They will knock on the door. They will be inquired about this. It will change other people's lives as these kids come into the trades, this opportunity, but maybe they would not have asked a trade or go onto a hall. They will see this. They will become a career man. They will have a job that can support their family for the future. It'll give them an honest chance at life. Furthermore, I understand the eyesore, but the community itself will see a lot more money. People who work there want to spend money there. I know I work at Microsoft and a quick trip, I mean, it's just one place, a quick trip. But they've told me that they're like number two in the state now, just from the construction workers, because you always stop there. It's like a small little community right there. You know, I just, I just want to say thank you to you guys for coming here and listening to us too. And I see both sides of the story. And it's a hard one and I appreciate you too for coming in here. Thank you. You know, there's a lot of consider about this, you know, but the union. And the union brings a strong union house, it makes a strong community, period, right? And that is something that this can happen to Paris. You know, once you become part of the union, you become part of a brotherhood. Your, everything changes, your opinion, your lifestyle. This makes the community stronger, brings the families together as a whole, a strong house, a union house. And I couldn't be happier. I could not be happier with my union, my brothers and sisters. And thank you for listening.
All right. Thanks very much. I'm going to check in with Zoom. So let's see, first person, we're just going to go down the list in alphabetical order. Sorry, that's the way Zoom puts you guys in order. So. Let's try Cindy Cat. Did you want to make a comment? Just unmute and turn your camera on. See you there, all right. Ask you to raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, great, so we're gonna get, need to get your full name, please, and spell your last name.
My name is Cindy Carter, C-A-R-T-E-R, I live in Appleton, Wisconsin. I'm totally opposed to this gas plant. It creates more ecocide because they have to create more fracking to bring up more gas. And I am all about the environment, we've got to stop worrying about money and start worrying about our environment, because we need to have a place to live. So, I'm opposed to this because of my environmental roots, so that's all I have to say.
All right, okay, thanks very much. Move on down the line here with Carrie. So again, need to unmute, turn on your camera.
No comment, no comment, but thank you.
All right, no, no problem there, Damian Kirk, you wanna comment?
Uh, my camera is not working, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine, we can make an exception there, uh, let me just indicate you're commenting. All right, so I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, so give us your name and comment, just, uh, just spell your name for us, uh, for the record.
My name is Damian Kirk, D-A-M-I-E-N-K-I-R-K. I am also opposed to this project for similar reasons as the previous comment on environmental grounds. Uh, January was the hottest January on record in spite of us entering a La Niña, uh, cycle, which typically causes cooling conditions. We cannot afford to add more carbon and methane emitting energy sources at this point, not just here, but anywhere. Additionally, this plant is estimated to cause uh, additional medical expenditures of tens of millions of dollars a year in the area due to respiratory cardio cardiovascular diseases, cancer, et cetera, uh, caused by the emissions from the plant. Those costs will not be paid by We Energy, they will be paid by the people, in particular, children and parents. And that is all I have to say.
Hey, thanks very much. All right, looks like Don Ferber.
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Okay, great, let me, uh, just, let me just indicate that you're commenting here. All right. Raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm, to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I certainly do.
All right, name and comment, please.
Thank you, my name is Don Ferber, that's D-O-N-F-E-R-B-E-R, I live in Madison, Wisconsin. I find this interesting because it really reminds me somehow of a timely movie Groundhog Day, that here we are once again, where We Energies is asking to more, add more fossil fuel infrastructure, and again, asking to raise rates. We and they have known for a long time about climate change, and again, this is being ignored with this proposal as to the impacts. There are a lot of severe costs the utilities help create regarding climate change, but they don't pay for those costs, so it doesn't seem to enter in the calculations. They're also ignoring the energy burden that too many of their customers are experiencing, and you've certainly heard from many over the recently and over time about how harmful this has been to them and their just ability to, to live successfully. It also ignores the health burdens on communities that are not included in the costs. Once again, doesn't impact We Energy's bottom line, so this doesn't really seem to count, but we should be accounting for that in terms of what we're doing here. So, but, you know, it reminds me of the movie Groundhog Day, that lessons were learned to create a different outcome, but I don't feel like they are being here. Utilities are supposed to serve customers first, yet, as mentioned, this will add to the burden that they're experiencing. I don't see that there have been really attempts to reduce energy use as a strategy instead. I find ironic they're supporting this new energy data center, but with all that capability, can't figure out energy aggravation, excuse me, aggregation it's aggravating to, or demand response management, to instead not need this power plant. It's especially interesting because I had an analyst tell me twenty years ago, when utilities were proposing to build a new power plant, that if instead the utility bought all of their customers a new Energy Star refrigerator, it would avoid the cost necessity of that new power plant, and would certainly benefit the customers far more. And all these measures in terms of energy efficiency, demand response, and so on, could create a lot of jobs and help local economies. Customers too would have a lot more money in their pockets to spend if they weren't spending so much on the utility bills. Now, particularly here with, uh, with Paris, it's, uh, and it's a smaller rice unit, this tends to be among the most expensive, uh, per unit of energy. So that in some respects makes it worse, that once again, the energy, the customers will bear the burden of those costs. We Energies has so far failed to come up with a percentage of income payment program as promised, and it's not showing any movement to help those in need. But instead, this is gonna make their situation work. So I'm asking the Public Service Commission to reject this proposal and send it back to We Energies to look at such alternatives, but it's clean energy, storage, energy efficiency measures, and demand management options, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ben, L-E-T.
No comment.
And Emmy Luton?
Hi, yes, Emily.
Yes, okay, great.
Hi, my name, do I have to swear in?
Yeah, just a second, go ahead. We have two hands here, okay, yes, uh, raise your right hand, do you swear, uh, or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, and give us your name and, and comment, please.
Um, hi, my name is Emily Lutan, L-U-Y-T-A-N, and I am a resident of Beaver Dam, Wisconsin. And I'm also an environmental epidemiology researcher. And my research is specifically about the long-term health impacts of industrial air pollution. And I'm here today representing the Wisconsin Environmental Health Network, which advocates for and educates about environmental health. And we are concerned about the health and social impacts of the proposed Paris Rice Gas Project, and we want to submit these comments for the environmental impact statement as proposed by W E P C O. A report from the Wisconsin Climate, from Wisconsin Climate Health, Union of Concerned Scientists, and P S E Healthy Energy shows that the proposed Paris Gas Plant would release harmful pollutants worsening asthma, triggering heart attacks, and cutting lives short. Over their lifetime, their lifetimes, this facility is projected to cause up to eighty-seven premature deaths, fifty-four heart attacks, and a hundred and sixty-five asthma onset cases. Based on the research from P S E Healthy Energy, the proposed Paris Gas Plant would cause health impacts costing between two, twenty-five point four million to forty-six point seven million dollars annually. Air pollution can negatively, negatively affect almost every single organ system in our human bodies, including kidneys, health, uh, heart, lungs, and brain. And it contributes to a low birth weight, miscarriages, and increased infant mortality. Ultimately, air quality is the leading risk factor for early deaths. And early deaths from natural, natural gas have already surpassed deaths from coal in nineteen states in this country. The National Institute of Health, some National Institute of Health Research shows that living in a zip code with fuel-fired power plants experience asthma hospitalization rates eleven percent higher and respiratory infection rates fifteen percent higher than zip codes without a plant. The W E P C O proposes this gas plant to be operational for at least thirty years. And that compounds the severe economic and health losses, and as other people have already mentioned, children and elderly populations, as well as low-income populations, will bear the brunt of these impacts. In addition, the debilitating and costly health impacts that the local community will suffer as a consequence of the Paris Gas Plant. In addition to these debilitating and costly health impacts, the construction of We Energy's proposed gas infrastructure would cost around two billion dollars. Which, and that cost is passed down to We Energy customers through their electric bills. While shareholders profit, black and brown populations are also disproportionately affected. And they unjustly shoulder both the deleterious health effects and an additional energy burden. In fact, black and brown households sometimes can even suffer double the energy burden of neighborhoods with white majority households. Even after the proposed thirty-year period of time that these plants will be, this plant will be operational, it risks becoming a stranded asset, a cost that will be paid for by the local community. We Energies, the most profitable utility in Wisconsin, is still collecting profit from millions in retrofits to the old current coal plant, which became a stranded asset and left customers on the hook for rising electricity rates. E P C O claims that the new gas plants are a necessary step to meet energy demand of the new intensive users, but the data shows that renewable energy can meet their electricity needs more reliably and affordably. In fact, the transition to natural gas that is proposed here could delay the adoption of renewables by fifty years or more. And according to Sierra Club Wisconsin, by twenty thirty-five, ninety percent of the, of Wisconsin's proposed combined cycle gas plants would be uneconomic to, to run at all compared to the cost of new clean energy, renewable energy proposals. So, there's, there's, there's an extensive range of health and economic consequences summarized above. And there's more that I wasn't, um, able to include in this short comment. But it's clear that renewables are the climate smart and economically smart option for our health and our future. And we at the W E, W E H N appreciate the Public Service Commission's considerations of these draft E I S comments. And we ask that P C S, P S, P S E ensures safe, reliable, and affordable energy by holding public utilities responsible to protect the public. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you for your comment. So we'll take one more person on Zoom, and we'll switch back to the hearing room, Erin Pogue, is it, P U G H? Did you want to, uh, comment?
Um, I did already, and I was there on the first one, I just didn't know how to log in, but you know what, it's funny, no.
Well, I think you're gonna, we're gonna move on to the next person, she's giving you a chance, okay, thanks. All right, so Felix. Commenting today, Felix? Yes, I thought you, I recognized you, okay, so let me swear in, raise your right hand, you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, so give us your full name to spell it for us, please.
Uh, my full name is Felix, F-E-L-I-X Ramirez, R-A-M-I-R-Z. And I'm a, I'm a representative for the Cement Masons and Plasters Local Five Ninety Nine. And I'm speaking in favor of the plant at Peak alone. This, this plant, just the construction of the plant will help sustain the careers of two hundred men and women, good, who have good-paying union jobs. It's also close to home for a lot of, lot of our members. Um, the other thing is, when these are built union, they're built right the first time, and that's usually due to, like Sean was saying earlier, the training that's involved. Every one of our trades have great, great training. But another thing is, as we move away from coal, power plants, these natural gas plants will help, uh, meet the high demands when renewable energy just can't meet that. And the other thing is, the apprenticeships, young kids getting, uh, getting a grasp on a career. That's about all I got.
All right, appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to the, uh, hearing room, so I'm gonna announce five people from the hearing room, and then we'll take them in order. To Katrina Claus. Uh, Colin. I'm, yeah, I'm just announcing some names ahead of times, people, so it's Colin Lin, Linowski. Georgia Rockwell. And, and Gatz, and so your guys are on deck. And we'll take first, okay, Katrina. Let me swear in, you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, name and comment.
Uh, my name is Katarina Claus, and I serve as the Climate Action Policy Coordinator at Citizen Action Wisconsin. Um, I'm here today as an advocate, and also as a parent, um, I have a three-year-old who is just diagnosed with asthma, this is his inhaler, it is a hundred and seventy-five dollars a week. Um, like many parents, I'm doing everything I can to take care of him, making sure he takes his medication, eats his vegetables. Thank you, um, and all the things like that, but there's one thing I can't do to protect him, and that is protect him from the air that he breathes. Um, Kenosha County already fails to meet federal air quality standards with some of the worst ozone pollution in the state. Now we're talking about adding another gas plant, a facility that'll pump more nitrogen oxides, volatile organic compounds, particulate matter, all of these different pollutants that don't just sit in the sky, they settle into our lungs and the lungs of our children. Research from the National Institute of Health shows that near a fossil fuel plant, there's an increase in asthma hospitalizations by eleven percent, respiratory infections by fifteen percent, and C O P D hospitalizations by seventeen percent. And the impacts of pollution doesn't just stop at the plant's fence line, studies show that air pollution from gas plants can spread over a hundred miles, meaning that families in Racine, Milwaukee, and beyond will also be impacted. That means thousands of children, just like my little one, will be forced to breathe dirtier air, hurting them at greater risk for asthma attacks, lung disease, and lifelong health complications. And why? The project locks us into thirty to forty years of fossil fuel dependence, keeping Wisconsin tethered to what is dirty, expensive energy after the rest of the country is moving forward with more renewable energy. Methane is eighty-six more times more potent than C O two at trapping heat for over twenty years. If we approve this project, that makes it nearly impossible for Wisconsin to meet our climate goals, pushing us towards more of this extreme heat and extreme cold, more floods, and climate disasters. We Energies and WAC is pushing this project not to power homes, but to feed A I data centers. The expansion of, um, energy-intensive data centers like Microsoft, um, and the proposed A I facility is driving that increased demand. These billion-dollar companies are offloading their energy burden on to us, these Wisconsin families, forcing ratepayers to subsidize their electricity needs where our bills are continuing to rise. A I and cloud computing companies should be required to invest in onsite renewable power, battery storage, and efficiency measures, rather than forcing Wisconsinites to foot the bill for more fossil fuel infrastructure. On top of the health and environmental damage, this project will increase energy costs for our customers who are already struggling to pay their bills. Over the past two years, We Energies has raised their rates by thirteen percent. And that's expected to continue to grow with more fossil fuel infrastructure. This fails to fully explore the clean energy alternatives that new gas infrastructure. Things like distributed solar, community solar, energy efficiency, um, are all viable, cost-effective solutions that reduce emissions and lower the cost for ratepayers. Yeah, instead of scaling up these renewable investments, We Energies is doubling down on that costly polluting gas infrastructure. This project also ignores the recommendations of the governor's task force on climate change, which explicitly advises against new fossil fuel infrastructure. Approving this project undermines our future, um, we don't need this plant, we have better, cleaner, more affordable solutions. We should be investing in those, not in projects that'll cost Wisconsinites more money while making our families sicker. Um, don't take my family and thousands of other children, pay the price for a short-sighted energy plan, we can and must do better.
Thank you. Colin? There you go. We'll have you say your names for us. Uh, raise your right hand, you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? All right, name and comment.
Good evening, my name is Colin Lewandowski, I'm here today to express my strong support for the Paris Power Plan Expansion. Uh, I currently work at the Paris Power Plan as a first-year steamfitter apprentice with Local One Eighteen. This work is vital not only for my career, but for the future of our energy infrastructure. Natural gas is a necessary step towards ensuring a cleaner, more efficient, and reliable energy supply. Compared to coal, natural gas significantly reduces emissions, making it a responsible choice for both environmental and economic reasons. It provides a stable energy source that supports local industries, business, and families while allowing for a more sustainable future. It provides a stable energy source that supports local industries, business and families while allowing for a more sustainable future. I urge decision makers to continue moving forward with this project as it is an investment in our economy, our environment and the skilled labors who keep our infrastructure strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Georgia Rockwell.
Yeah, um, it's up there.
Hello.
Raise your right hand, you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, name and comment.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Um, oh, sorry. My name is Georgia Rockwell. I live in the region and I'm very concerned about this proposal from We Energies. I'm here to ask that the PSC deny the Paris gap, the Paris Gas Plant Proposal for multiple reasons. Constructing new plants to burn additional fossil fuels is bad for our planet, bad for our health, bad for our pocketbook and a missed opportunity towards a cleaner and safer future for all of us. In twenty twenty-one, the World Health Organization declared climate change to be the single biggest health threat facing humanity. I'm scared for my own future and I'm especially scared for our kids' futures. It's unethical and irresponsible to build another power plant that consumes fossil fuels when there are better solutions that exist. Every additional ton of CO2 and methane that gets put into the atmosphere makes our world more dangerous for all life on earth. It's not fair to saddle the next generation with these catastrophic risks because our utility company doesn't want to change from business as usual. They can do better. The extreme weather events we're already experiencing, including historic droughts and floods, superstorms, raging wildfires and unprecedented coastal flooding will continue to rapidly worsen unless the world cuts carbon pollution. The proposed rice plant will also emit large amounts of nitrous oxides, fine particulate matter, sulfur dioxides and VOCs into the air. Air pollution from fossil fuel combustion is one of the leading risk factors of premature mortality. Investing in a methane gas plant diverts resources away from proven cost-effective renewable energy solutions like solar and wind power. When paired with batteries, renewable energy solutions are both reliable and cost-effective. Our neighboring states are investing heavily in renewable energy while Wisconsin continues to lag behind with fossil fuels. For example, Iowa gets over sixty percent of its energy production from wind power and has lower energy prices than we do. Why aren't we doing the same thing here? Um, so please listen to the taxpayers and reject the Paris proposal. We don't want any more fossil fuel energy plants. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last person for now, uh, in the hearing room, uh, then we'll switch over to Zoom. It's, uh, Anne Getson. There you go. Right hand, you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, name and comment.
My name's Anne Getson. Um, I'm from Milwaukee, Wisconsin. I'm a family doctor. I'm a mom of two amazing little girls, um, and I'm a lifelong Wisconsinite and appreciate the beautiful state and place we work in. I'm here to register my opposition to this plan. Um, I agree about the critical importance of energy infrastructure. I appreciate and respect the hard work and importance of our laborers and unions. Um, and we do need to grow infrastructure and develop to address needs. That's not up for debate. For me, the question is how do we do that responsibly to take care of the people in our community, my patients, my loved ones, my family? Um, when we talk about air pollution and when we talk about, uh, natural gas, sometimes it it gets discussed as the cleaner option and it is cleaner than coal, but it brings a tremendous amount of life-threatening um, air pollution along with it, along with the threats for climate change. So when we think about how, these can't help it, I'll put my doctor lens, doctor head on for a minute. When we breathe in oxygen, the tiny little molecules of oxygen are what go in and feed our muscles to move, our brains to think, our heart to pump. Similarly, when there's air pollution, that's as small as that, it gets absorbed and runs through our whole bodies as well. And that is how the air pollution and all of these different gases we're talking about and you're hearing experts testify. That's how those things get in and hurt your lungs, hurt your heart, puts you at higher risk for heart attack and stroke and dementia and affect your kids' abilities to learn and thrive. Um, so that's a lot of bad news, but there's a lot of really good news too, because we have really strong evidence-based strategies to do better. Um, and I plead with the Public Service Commission to take that into account that a new methane gas plant is not our only option to help our communities thrive, keep them healthy and economic investment. Because just like the air we breathe is critical to our health, so is a living wage and being able to put food on the table. And it's not an either or picture in my assessment. Um, I was really fortunate to participate as a physician fellow uh, in a program training me on climate and health science policy. I had the chance to study in depth for a year about the different types of policies and strategies that we have around energy. And natural gas is not a good option and it is not our only option. We can do better. And I hope that we look to other places besides We Energies' recommendations, which is the most profitable public utility in Wisconsin. I'm not convinced that they have the health and well-being of our communities at heart. Um, so consider other possibilities and other ways we can build up our communities and economies while still keeping our families healthy at home. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We're gonna switch back to Zoom. We do have two more people on the list for the in-person. Uh, Jadeen Sanona, uh, Sanoda and Ken Wewler Mueller. Ken Weg Mueller, just slow down a little, I'll get it right. Um, so, uh, we'll switch to Zoom for a minute. And so if people that haven't made a comment before in the hearing room, wish to do so, fill out your slip, get that back to staff. There's gonna be a, some time for you to do that. So let's switch over to Glenn Schoen. Looks like, uh, S C H O E N. Did you want to make a comment? Maybe the unmute. Okay, I'll put a no comment for now.
No comment.
Okay, thanks. Hannah Sorenson, did you wish to comment?
Yes, please.
All right, just gonna adjust your name here. So I know you're, you've spoken. All right, great. So raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Oh, great. So please, uh, state and spell your name, please, and then go ahead with your comment.
Uh, my name is Hannah Sorenson, H A N N A H S O R E N S E N. And I'm a, a City of Milwaukee resident and a second-year master of public health student. I'm here today to ask the PSC to deny the Gar, the Paris Gas Plant Proposals. I'm here today because I know that health is not just about what you or I eat or what medicine we take or how much exercise we get. In reality, much of a person's opportunity to be healthy has to do with the environments that they exist in and the resources that they have or do not have access to. This decision today and proposals related to it will have direct effects on people's health through the modification of their environment. Methane gas negatively affects health. Evidence is clear on that. Um, that particulate matter contributes to many negative health outcomes that ultimately lead to decreased quality and length of life, especially among communities that, um, as others have pointed out, too often have little to no say in polluting plants being built in or near their communities and their homes. Building, um, an expensive gas plant is also a risky investment. Wisconsin families are already struggling to afford high utility bills, which were recently raised in part due to WEPCO's billion-dollar investment in the Oak Creek Coal Plant. Customers are still paying for this plant even though it's no longer providing electricity to them. We Energies is pricing people out of basic health and safety and I urge the commis, commissioners to be exceedingly cautious about additional fossil fuel investments that would carry a similar risk. And then I just want to reiterate that we do have other options. Several reliable and cheaper renewable energy and energy efficiency options exist and should be prioritized. It is frustrating and immoral that We Energies continues to ignore these alternatives in order to maximize profits for its share, shareholders while passing on serious risks to its customers. We Energy stated that resource diversity was one of their primary reasons, uh, to build this project. But as of twenty twenty-three, they generated nearly a third of their power from gas, a third from coal, a third from nuclear, while utilizing just fractions, only about point two percent solar and two point four percent wind. If they really cared about diversifying their resources, they would be pushing to expand renewable energy. We ener, We Energy should not be allowed to continue to invest in costly fa, fossil fuel infrastructure that is already harming the environment and the physical, mental and financial well-being of our community. It is the PSC's job to protect consumers, public health and the environment. And that means denying this gas plant and related infrastructure and pursuing wind, solar and energy efficiency. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, Jean Uri. U R R Y. Did you wish to comment? I need to unmute, unmute and, uh, turn on your video. Jean, no comment?
Hello, you hear me?
Oh, okay. Let's see.
Okay.
I can see you there. Yes. Okay. Let me just adjust your name here. All right, and I'll swear you in, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, go ahead. Give us your name and comment.
Jean, J E A N, Uri, U R R Y.
Okay.
Okay, I am a resident in Yorkville, Wisconsin, which borders Union Grove, Wisconsin, which borders Paris, Wisconsin. Um, I am a lifelong resident here. I have property that I inherited from my parents that I now live on. And I was very surprised, like one other person from the surrounding community that didn't know about this. There was no notification. I received a little postcard from the Sierra Club letting me know that this public service hearing was going on the notice of hearing. And it was normal dump day and we happened to stop at the hearing and saw a very crowded room at the first session. Heard a wonderful presentation from both sides of union members. Uh, doctors, physicians, the community in Milwaukee that is really struggling with environmental impact because of airflow. But I want to go on record saying I strongly oppose this. Um, hopefully it will not pass. Hopefully I don't have to move from air travels in all kinds of directions along urban corridor, but I don't want to live close to this. Um, and I just feel for my community and everybody else in the Chicago, Milwaukee urban corridor, and I think this will not be a good move.
Okay, I appreciate your, thank you. Okay, Jeff, how, how many did I do so far? It was three? I don't know. Okay, we'll keep it. Uh, Jeff Halldin, H A L L D I N. Did you want to comment?
No comment. Thank you.
No, okay. Okay, well, I have one more and we'll switch back to the room here. Jim Coots. See you there. I can unmute you. Looks like you're having trouble with your phone. Okay. Uh, let me swear you in. I'll raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, and, uh, just stay and spell your name. Give us your comment.
Jim, J I M, C O O T S Junior. Um, I'm a Local five ninety-nine, area eighty-four-five, cement mason. Um, twenty-five years in. This was just brought to my attention a couple hours ago. Um, it's really hard to fathom that you want to build a fossil fuel power plant when it's gonna do the same thing the coal power plant did in Kenosha. Now they dismantled, dismantled that and tore it apart. You know, I, I like the idea of there's work for our slavers, finishers, carpenters, electricians. I love that. That's cool. I like that idea because it gives young children getting into the trade, plus the guys and women that are brothers that are fixing to retire from their, our trades. The problem I'm having though is We Energies needs to get in their vehicles, drive west or drive south, Indiana or I, Iowa, and look at the windmills. I don't think we need a fossil fuel plant here in Paris. I live in Mount Pleasant. We don't, we don't need this. So I, I oppose to this. My members are not gonna like the idea of it, but I think our livelihood and our health is more than important than the mighty dollar. And that's all I have to say.
All right. Well, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
All right, so let's move on to the two appearances we have in the room. We have, uh, Jadeen Sanona and Ken Wegmueller. Just gonna shut you down here, Jim. All right, swear you in. Uh, do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, use your name and comment.
Okay. Um, thank you for your time today. My name is Jadeen Sonoda and I'm here today to ask you to deny permits for this proposed gas plant. For years, a growing group of us have been showing up to
You slow down because with the mask, it's hard.
Um, for years, a growing group of us have been showing up to these hearings to tell you that the climate crisis isn't waiting for us. And we need to take action now to prevent further harm. Further harm isn't a vague concept. It means specific things. It means heat stroke, asthma attacks, a home destroyed by flooding or wildfire and so much more. It's past time for the commissioners to listen. If new gas plants
I had my chance.
Thought I muted him.
Um, if, if new gas plants like the one being proposed today are built, will be locked into fossil fuel use for decades to come. Whether you call it gas, methane gas, fossil gas, natural gas or anything else, it's all the same thing. It's a fossil fuel and methane, the main component of the gas proposed to be burned at the Paris facility is an eighty times more potent greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide over a twenty-year time span.
Slower. Are you okay now?
When you look at the research, it becomes clear that gas is not a bridge fuel and is instead a way to maintain a status quo that isn't working for anyone except for We Energies who profits off of all of us. I see tho, those of us here who are fighting for a safe world to live in and good jobs to support us as on the same side. And we deserve a power scepter that satisfies all of our needs. That's not the one that We Energies is building. Pursuing this plant would be incredibly dangerous, not to mention expensive. We Energies is the most profitable utility in Wisconsin. But despite their gains, their customers are facing extreme unjust electric rates, particularly black and brown communities in Milwaukee. This is a racial and environmental and economic injustice issue. And it's the responsibility of the three PSC commissioners to make We Energies accountable to the harm they cause. Lastly, I'm also a proud union member and I care about good jobs and a safe workplace. And that includes a safe and healthy climate to live and work in. If we continue burning fossil fuels like gas, that world doesn't exist. It already doesn't exist for so many people. For all of these reasons and more, please deny this permit.
Thank you. Uh, Ken, you're up. And we have Chad up here, Ken. Right hand, do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right.
I do.
State your name and give your comment.
Uh, my name is Ken Wegmuller. I live at, uh, we call it, uh, one hundred forty-fourth Avenue, uh, Union Grove. Uh, or I should say two five five one hundred forty- Uh, or I should say two five five, one hundred forty-fourth. This project's right in my backyard. I, uh, we call it. I understand it gives jobs and all that stuff. I worked on picker plants over the years. I'm an iron worker. I have thirty years doing it and stuff. And all my wife is very upset over this project. Uh, my wife, uh, she would have been here today, but she had foot surgery, so she couldn't, uh. What was it, uh? She grew up down on Pleasant Prairie. Her dad had fifty acres down there. And, uh, what was it? Uh, she was bought out at the Pleasant Prairie Power Plant. And, uh, what was it, uh? It disrupted her life for like four years before she was able to get on with her life and live a normal life in the house again. And, uh, I don't want to see that for her. And, uh, I mean, I drive two hundred miles going back and forth to work. I mean, every day. I don't, you know. I know you guys all know where I'm coming from because I know you guys all traveled too. Uh. My job sites are loud. And, you know, and all that. I like coming home and having peace and quiet. Sitting out by the pool, having a cocktail, and that. I don't want to listen to the project when I get home from work. I don't want to breathe the air from this thing. I get the wind right out of the, uh, east. And it's gonna be, I mean, this thing's right in my backyard. And that, I don't want to see it to happen. And, uh, I just, I come unprepared. And that because I feel like this is all under the table. I was not notified about anything about this meeting tonight. And that, I asked my wife if she received anything in the mail. I've been off, uh, worked for a little over a year because I had three heart surgeries. And, uh, we call it, uh, and I get the mail, so I know I never received it. And that, and I'm just, I'm unprepared. I'm kind of ticked off about how, you know, this has been presented to us. And then, um, I don't want to see it go. And that. Um, that's about all. Well, and another thing is, like Dan said, with the traffic and stuff out on the road. It's a funny thing because right before I came to this meeting, I had to go upstairs for a traffic violation because I got a ticket. We call it going from my house into town here. My headlight went out and I get pulled over for a headlight. I go out on K R, East the inner, or East I ninety-four, and I'm driving down the road and I got a cop sitting right there taking radar, and I'm going forty-five miles an hour with the speed limit is. And I got a guy who travels past me going over seventy miles an hour, and the cop never pulled out one bit. And that irritated me. And that, and I mean, our infrastructure and our roads and stuff are falling apart because all the gravel trucks and stuff flying up and down the roads, and they don't even drive right. I pull out on K R and I'm driving down the road. And I mean, it's like if you're not going sixty-five, seventy miles an hour, you're going to get run over on your own darn road. It's not an interstate. And that, I'm ticked off about that too. So, uh, like you said, I came unprepared. I just wanted to let you know how I feel. And that, it's just, uh, I'm just gonna leave it as that right now, so.
Well, thanks for coming. I appreciate hearing from you.
Yep.
Uh, Chad, Pivocars. I was trying. Yes, my, my wife's Polish. I should have gotten that better. All right, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Give us your name the right way, and then your comment.
Chad, last name is P I W O W A R C Z Y K.
Say it for me. I want to hear it.
Pivo Varchik.
Pivo Varchik, okay.
Um, before I start here, I just want to say my spread out the bed. I'm all for the union. My son just joined the union. He's nineteen years old. He drives heavy equipment to start now. Um, twenty-five years ago, I watched my father come out from Paddock Lake, and his dream was to buy land and move to Paris. And he met his dreams and built a house here off of E W. Gorgeous. I watched him do that. And that, as a kid, I watched that, and that was something that I wanted to do. I want, I want to do this. I want to get a piece of land and build a beautiful house. We have some land, you can smell the poop, farmland, you see corn, you see weeds, you drive down these long roads, and all you see is corn. And four years ago, I was, I was blessed. I worked hard through my life, and I'm an industrial maintenance mechanic, so I punch a clock. I'm a middle-class, blue-collar worker. Just struggling like everybody else is. Four years ago, I bought a piece of land. I live on two hundred and eighty-ninth Fifth Street. And I bought two and a half acres and I built a house. Took me two years with three of my friends. And I live in my parents' basement. My mom's right here. She also lives in Paris. She's with my, my dad passed away, but she's in the same house. She's still here. I don't want this, okay? I, I have a kid. I want to see people still have farmlands. I want to see this. We keep allowing these things to come in. We're not going to have any land left. There's not, this doesn't benefit the people here. This is for Foxconn, Microsoft. And we're helping the rich people. They're not here to help us. We don't, we don't gain anything from this. I understand you guys got to have work. Put it somewhere else. I don't want it here. This is a great, Paris is a great town. I'm proud to be here, proud of Union Grove. We were all a group together, a small community. And it's, it's a great place to live. And, and bringing these things, keep bringing these things is not good for us. There's other ways. There's other way to get energy. And there doesn't, it doesn't bring the cost down for me. I'm not getting anything for this. And I don't, I don't think anybody else is getting anything for this. And, uh, I get we need jobs, but it doesn't belong here. And, uh, I don't want it. And, um, I want to keep my nice community with the land we have and what we have. And I like the corn. I like seeing weeds. I like seeing cows. I like seeing this stuff. This is why I moved out here. This is why my father moved out here twenty-five years ago, and I watched him do this, and this is what I'm doing. And now my son's hopefully going to do the same thing that I did. And that's all I really have to say.
All right. Appreciate that. Thanks. All right, so that's all the people in the room so far. Hope you're here for a while. We got, uh, when I counted like twelve, fifteen more people on Zoom, so uh, you, you're welcome to stay, but I'll leave it up to you guys. Um, it's gonna be a while on Zoom, so, you know, you don't feel we'll see them or anything. So let's move on. Uh, John Mu, uh, Muir, M E U R E R.
Yes, John Moyer.
Moyer, sorry. So, um, before we get started. So, uh, shall I give you guys like a couple minutes if you want to leave? Because it's gonna be pretty loud. All right, so we're just gonna take a quick break. Let you guys, if you want to leave, we'll let you do that. Yeah, so just be back in five.
They can do it great.
Hey, I've been doing it for fifteen years, so it's, I know, I know, I've been through it. Been around the block.
Okay, we're gonna get started. So I see we've got people leave or need to leave, but want to push on? We do have one person in the room who signed up too, so we'll be taking that person as well. Let's get started with John. We have him waiting in the wings here. So I'm gonna insist that we be quiet in the hearing room, please. Okay, thanks. All right, John, we're ready for you. So let me swear you in. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, so give us your name and comment, please.
Hi, I'm Dr. John Moyer. As a pediatrician and a community health professor and community health advocate in Wisconsin, I strongly oppose the construction of the Paris methane gas plant due to its profound health and economic risks. The proposed plant will significantly increase air pollution, leading to higher rates of asthma, heart attacks, and premature deaths in our community, with an estimated $26 to $47 million in health-related costs every year over its operational lifetime. Children, particularly vulnerable to respiratory conditions, will face amplified risks with this plant, while pregnant women may also encounter heightened chances of adverse neurodevelopmental outcomes in their babies and children. Moreover, investing in methane gas infrastructure is economically short-sighted. Methane emissions have climate impacts comparable to coal, undermining Wisconsin's efforts to combat climate change. By diverting resources away from renewable energy solutions like wind, solar, and virtual power plants, noting that We Energies' current energy mix is less than 3% wind and solar, this project not only threatens public health, but it also delays our transition to a sustainable, cost-effective energy future. For the health and economic well-being of our community, I urge the Wisconsin Public Service Commission to reject the Paris methane gas plant proposal. Thanks for your consideration.
All right, thanks very much for your comment. Yeah, no, I have it here. So I just wanted to confirm your spelling. Your last name is M-E-U-R-E-R.
Correct.
All right, great, thanks.
M-U-E.
M-U, M-E-U-R-E-R.
And I submitted this public comment online as well.
Oh, okay. So just so you know, once you submit once, that's all you really need to do. So it's in writing. Commission's gonna read it in the same format, so. But I appreciate you showing up and participating, but it wasn't necessary for you to speak, just so you know.
I wanted to share with everyone present. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thanks. All right, so. Let's see, so you know, I have been seeing some names that have been on the list for a while. And I think alphabetically, they've kind of been pushed down the list. So I'm just gonna take a couple of people that I've noticed out of order. Ron Rasmussen is one of them. So let's see, I'll have you unmute. And we'll take you now.
Yeah, I have a few comments to make. Or you want? I'll raise my right hand. Go ahead.
All right, so do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, so let's have your, have you state and spell your name?
Yes, it's actually Ronald Rasmussen, but Ron is fine. That Rasmussen is R-A-S-M-U-S-S-E-N.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, I haven't, I've, I'm a member of Union of Concerned Scientists, and I'm one of these people that have, that did not hear about this initially. And thankfully, this organization in which I'm a member of contacted me about this. And so that's just for the record. I wish they had gone out in a timely manner. I haven't heard anything yet about the We Energies 2021 Climate Report, where they made some promises to the population in Wisconsin to lower CO2 emissions by going to alternative energies like wind and solar. They forecasted in this report in 2021 that they were going to lower the CO2 emissions by 60% by the end of 2025. And I kind of wish there was somebody here from the Public Service Commission or some other authority from We Energies to ask how they're doing there before they start building a methane power plant. They also said in this report that they were, this was very optimistic, and I was very happy to read this. By 2025, the reduction would be 80% over 2005 levels of CO2 emissions. So my point here is unless they can come up with, unless they can verify, first of all, that you're gonna meet those standards by the end of 2025, that tells me they have not been investing enough in alternative energy. And I certainly appreciate all the, all the positive remark from the union leaders and the health effects. But climate change is going to have health effects going on indefinitely, affecting our children and our children's children and their children way into the future. We have already passed the critical point of 1.5 degrees centigrade increase in climate temperature, which equals 2.7 degrees Fahrenheit, if you want to do the quick calculation, or something we can relate to here much better. So you know, someone says, okay, well, 2.7 degrees Fahrenheit, it's no big deal. I walk up my door, and so it's two degrees higher. This is global temperature. This is, this is the temperature of the oceans. And these are the, these are the, the shakers and movers. The oceans are the shakers and movers of worldwide temperature and huge increases in temperature during any time of the year. And take a look at our winters in Wisconsin. I was born and raised here. These are not winters in Wisconsin. These are winters in Missouri. So it's happening now. And that 1.5 degrees is, is something that has occurred once already. And as, if it occurs consecutively over the next five, six, seven years, we have passed a critical point. So I'm a retired research chemist, and I'm well-versed in climate science. And I fear that if this plant is constructed, they will not put as much energy, energy might not be the right word, much work into alternate energy and like wind and solar. So, and I have a feeling also, since our federal government is now in a state of chaos, and there's a lot of climate deniers, that this is an opportunity for We Energies to jump on the bandwagon and start burning fossil fuels. So with that, I will stop my comments.
All right, well, I appreciate you speaking today.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move. There's one other, at least one. I'm not gonna get everybody here, but I know Walden Way had signed in very early on the hearing, so we'll take your comment. If you'd like to speak, just unmute.
Yeah, nobody wants to make a comment tonight, and I spoke earlier. We're just listening in, though. It's been very interesting.
Okay, great, thanks. Thanks for deferring. Okay, so we'll just, we'll head back to the alphabetical order. Start with Brian Rogers. You want to unmute? Let me know if you're commenting today. Okay, well, I'm just gonna indicate a no comment for now. Kari Willms, looks like W-I-L-L-M-S. Wilms, did you want to comment? So I'm gonna ask people to unmute themselves. I'm not gonna unmute you.
Hi, sorry.
All right.
Did you hear me?
Yes, so can you get your screen on?
Yes, I am trying to. So sorry.
Oh, that's fine.
I have to change my settings, I think.
If I'm gonna send you a, ask to start your video, that might help you find the right button. But I'm not seeing you at all now. Okay, well, we will get her back. Oh, there you are. Maybe some difficulty there. All right, well, just hang tight, Kari. We'll get, we'll get back to you. Let me try LH. Did you wish to comment?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So I'm gonna just rename you with a public comment there, and I'll have you, I'll swear you in first. Raise your right hand. You swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And so state and spell your name for us, please.
My name is Lila Huffman, L-I-L-A-H-U-F-F-M-A-N.
Great, okay, go ahead with your comment.
Methane gas traps 80 times more heat than carbon dioxide, creating greenhouse gas. That makes it a main contributor to climate change. I'm only 13, and I know that this plan is a bad idea for environment. That's what I'd like to say.
Okay, I appreciate you for joining us, and take care. Right, I'm just gonna change your name here. It looks like we got Kari back. All right, so I'll need to, I just need to unmute your microphone. I can try to do that from here. There we go.
All right.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay.
Okay, so you're gonna swear you in, raise your right hand. You swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, so state and spell your name for me.
Kari, K-A-R-I, Wilms, W-I-L-L-M-S. And I want, oh, I wanted to speak today because my concern with this, for one, I'm a resident of Paris, had no notification of this meeting. Other neighbors have not had any notification of this. I feel like the transparency has not been clear, and that is very troubling. I live right next to the Paris grade school, which from the proposed site is only five miles away from this proposed plant. I understand that this can create jobs for the labor force, for the union. My own husband is in the trades, I understand that. But I also have two young boys. I also work at the school. That is our future. That is my main concern. From an alternative site, from the substation, it's only three miles away. That is incredibly close. If this, if the pollution can affect 100 miles away, what about those over 200-plus kids at the school? We have recess three times a day. We have gym multiple times during the week for every grade. We pride ourselves on getting outside, getting fresh air. We already have pollution from the dump. Now we have solar panels behind so many of our residences, and now this proposed plan for this plant. And my main concern is the health, as we've heard from many that have spoke today about the environmental factors, the health factors, majority. In the long run, this will cost us more money in healthcare. This will cost us more money in this plant, and the residents will not see any benefit. We will see the negative impacts, and that is my reasoning for against it. For, primarily for our future, for our children. Thank you.
All right, thanks very much. So we can go off the record for a second. So I know a number of people on Zoom have joined us sort of in the middle, midstream of this hearing, and I just wanted to review, you know, what's, what the process is, what are, what we're what we're conducting right now. So just so you know, like, we're just collecting your comments and unpackaging them as part of the record in the case. That's gonna be presented to the commissioners who make the decision at, at, at our agency. So, you know, whether you speak your comment now or file a comment in writing, your comment will go before the commissioners. They will review your comment along with all the other evidence when they're making their decision in the case. So, you know, if you came in late, I made that explanation a while ago, but if you're coming in late, you might not really know, you know, what the goal is here for you and what the purpose of the hearing is. So just keep that in mind. So your comment will be reviewed and considered. So I just wanted people to get that info. Let's call the next person. I think it's Brian Rogers. You raised your hand, and you have an issue? Did you, did you, you, did you want to speak? Because I had called you before. So that's fine. If you want to speak, let me know. No, he was leaving. Okay, so what about Maria? Looks like Tysinski? Maria? So I'm gonna spell that name for you in case I'm butchering it again. It's T-Y-K-S-I-N-S-K-I. Okay, we'll put a no comment for now. How about Megan Pierce?
I, yes, I would like to make a comment tonight.
Okay, great. Yeah, you're unmuted, and we got your camera on. Let me just change her name here. Perfect. All right, so let me swear you in. Raise your right hand. You swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, state and spell your name, please.
Hi, my name is Megan, M-E-G-H-A-N, Pierce, P-I-E-R-C-E.
Hey, go ahead.
All right, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I am opposed and ask that this Paris gas plant project be denied. According to the environmental impact statement, the proposed plant's annual greenhouse gas emissions will be approximately 590,809 tons per year. And tonight, we've heard many comments about how impactful methane gas is to health. And I have seen the direct impact of these health concerns as I have immediate family members who suffer from asthma. And financially speaking, because gas costs more than clean energy, We Energies can pay an even greater profit margin and then make customers pay for this. We Energies is the most profitable utility in Wisconsin, making more than double the revenue of the next highest utility. And in the last three years, they have increased rates for customers each year. The cost of building this new facility will be passed on to ratepayers, who will be forced to shoulder the financial burden well beyond the expected lifespan of these plants. Regarding the reliability concerns we've heard, according to a recent report, methane gas power plants are increasingly unreliable, especially during extreme weather events, which will honestly increase due to continuing climate change concerns. Continuing to rely on them poses a significant risk for our electricity grid due to their vulnerability to failure. Our state must take responsibility for the impacts of its actions, and we could make a pivotal turning point to make strides for a safer and a healthier world. In comparison to many other countries around the world, our country has such a huge discrepancy when looking at our population size and the large amount of energy we consume. Investing in clean energy solutions will transform our economy and reduce the impacts of climate change in our state and beyond. I ask the PSC to take account of the multiple harms posed by building a new gas-fired power plant and focus on clean energy moving forward. And I hope that our state can help support the labors and the union, as we've heard from people tonight, who would be impacted to change in our energy sources because there is, can still be work from clean energy projects. Thank you. That's it.
All right, thanks for your comment. Just gonna switch over. We have one person in the hearing room who can take the comment from Eric Steinle.
Steinle. I think I probably messed that up before. Have you been here before?
So the M. S-T-E-I-M-L-E.
Okay, great. So let me swear you in. Raise your right hand. You swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, so name and comment.
My name is Eric Steinle. I'm a business representative for Hummers and Steamfitters Local 118. I have been a steamfitter for 20 years. I just wanna make sure that everybody knows that this, this gas-fired power plant is already there. It seems like a lot of the comments tonight, they don't, some of the people might have not have known that the, this, this, these four units already exist, and they're gonna add units to it to accommodate for the power load that the area needs. It, I'm gonna, I gotta pull up my notes, I'm sorry. A reciprocal internal combustion engine or rice power plant is an excellent complement to renewable energy sources like wind or solar. Unlike traditional baseload power plants, rice plants can start up and ramp up quickly, making them ideal for balancing the variable variabilities of renewables. When the wind isn't blowing and the sun isn't shining, a rice plant can seamlessly provide backup power, ensuring a stable and reliable grid. As the demand for electricity grows with the widespread adoption of heat pumps and electrical vehicles, our already strained power grid will require more flexible and reliable power generation. Rice plants, when fueled by natural gas, produce significantly fewer emissions than coal-fired power plants while offering the agility needed to support a modern low-carbon energy system. Their high efficiency, fast response times, and ability to integrate with clean energy make them a crucial part of ensuring a grid stability in the face of rising power demands. Obviously, we live in a climate in an area where the sun doesn't always shine. The wind doesn't always blow. The snow covers the solar fields. We're gonna need that extra power to supply this area where we're eliminating coal-fired power plants. P4 Power Plant got decommissioned in 2018. And you, and you've heard the testimonies of everybody else saying that 500,000 tons of emissions will be released into the air with this new addition onto an existing gas-fired power plant. They pretty much cut the emissions in half in the area. Everybody's saying how WEC doesn't have a plan. Well, this is part of their plan. They started off with regular coal. They moved to clean coal where they add scrubbers inside the emission stacks to reduce the carbon going into the atmosphere by using ammonia that attaches to the carbon molecule and drops it out of the emissions. And now they're moving into the natural gas era of power generation that is, it does work well with renewable energy, and you do need that boost. The only renewable energy really have is solar and wind. You're gonna need something else until they come up with the next technology to where we can actually have a stable grid and rely on completely new renewable energy. This is the next step to do that, and they are taking the correct steps. They're, they have a plan. I, I, I think that's, yeah, I mean, there's, there was a couple of people that came up here from the health industry. Hospitals are a leading contributor to greenhouse gases. They actually are globally one of the leading producers of emissions. So there are a lot of things we could do to fix these situations, but I, when everybody's saying that WEC doesn't have a, a, a good plan or we need to go to renewable, this is the plan to get to renewable energy. That's all I got.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks. Okay. We'll switch back to Zoom. And so far, it looks like we have four more people that I haven't asked yet if they have comments. So we'll start back on there. And we'll ask Olivia Schiller. Did you wish to comment?
No comment. Thank you.
All right, no problem. Hey, moving down the list, Sabine Petrika.
Yeah, I'd like to comment, please.
Great, okay, let me just adjust your name. Oh, wrong person. All right, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I affirm.
Okay, and state and spell your name, please.
My name's Sabine Petrika, S-A-B-I-N-E-P-E-T-E-R-K-A. I have some, I have some concerns about this project, and I would like to ask the PCS to reject the request from WCE Energy Group for more infrastructure for natural gas due to its detrimental impacts on our air and climate. Natural gas is mostly methane gas, which traps heat in the atmosphere at about 28 times the capacity of carbon dioxide, making it an extremely potent greenhouse gas that we should not be investing in considering the impacts of climate change that we are already seeing. Burning gas also worsens air pollution, increasing cases of asthma, and exacerbating other health issues in our communities. Instead of projects like this one, we should be investing in renewables, which can also generate union jobs. Costs of solar and wind energy have declined in recent years, making them a financially smarter choice in most situations. We Energies has been hiking up utility rates despite public outcry. Their rates are unaffordable, and yet they always say they need more of our money for renewable projects. Yet here they are, asking for more money for fossil fuels. Families are struggling to keep the lights on while We Energies bleeds them dry, and this company still has the audacity to present this proposal that would rob the kids of a future with breathable air. We need cost-effective renewables that can save money now while protecting the planet for the next generation. These issues are urgent, and we can't waste time and resources on new harmful methane gas infrastructure. Please say no to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hey, how about Sarah Stannard?
I'm here.
All right, great. Let me swear you in. Raise your right hand. You swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, state and spell your name, please.
My name is Sarah Stannard, S-A-R-A-S-T-A-N-A-R-D. I'm a resident of the city of Kenosha, and I'm speaking on behalf of our Climate Families Group here in the city. I'll keep it short. I just want to add our statement that we oppose the plan, the plan, because we don't want to pay the financial burden of higher costs nor because we don't want to pay the financial burden of higher costs, nor the health burden of higher air pollution and increased greenhouse gases. That's all.
Thank you very much. And Zoe Arniman.
Oh, yes, I would like to comment.
Okay, can you get your screen on?
Uh, yes. Me. Try to do that. Could you maybe send me a request?
I can do that.
Perfect.
Here you go.
Yeah, it says my settings are different, so let me try to change my settings quick.
So while we're waiting, anyone else in the room here wish to comment that hasn't had a chance? No, okay. So if it's not working, I can take your comment without the video. That's fine. Zoe, are you there? Zoe, can you hear me? Great. Well, she got disconnected. Just take a breath here and wait a second. There we go. Okay, I see you're back. I can take your comment without the video if you're having trouble. It's not a problem.
It was like a setting issue.
Okay, all right, you're good. Well, let's get you here before anything else happens. I'll raise your right hand.
Okay.
Or tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yep. My name is Zoe Arniman. For the record, it's spelt Z O E. Last name, A R N E M A N. I just wanted to add a quick comment that I am a lifelong Wisconsin resident and have always relied on We Energies for my energy needs. I graduated from UW Milwaukee with a degree in conservation and environmental sciences. I'm a mother to a young child, and I am an environmental activist, hoping to change the world to be cleaner and more sustainable for my daughter and all the generations to come. I'm calling in tonight from home to voice my opposition to this new gas plant proposal. I advocate for no new plans and for cleaner energy investment. My, the concerns brought to you all tonight are backed by science and are known well before this meeting. And the time is now for those in power to make the final decision whether they will listen to the science and reject this proposal for cleaner energy solutions and cleaner air for our planet moving forward. Thank you.
All right, thanks very much. Someone else chiming in there too. All right, awesome. Okay, so that's all we have on Zoom. Anyone, let's see, there are a few people still online who have indicated no comment, so I'm assuming you don't want to make one, just leave it at that. If you do want to comment, just unmute right now. Not seen anybody? All right, one last call for in the room. No one rushing the table here to make another comment? No? Okay, looks like we're done with that. So I just want to review a couple of things. We will be online February 13 at 10 a.m. on our Zoom connection for the party hearing session. So I'll just ask members of the public to connect using the live stream, not the Zoom connection. So it's just so it would just be to observe. Public is just there to observe. So the the live stream should do the trick for you. Also, public comments, we'll still take those in writing up until February 17, either on the commission's website or by US Mail. So if you haven't made a comment yet, still have time to do so. Otherwise, thanks, everyone, for joining us. Appreciate you all attending and being patient with this process. I'd also like to thank Union Grove for this facility and Racine County's Finest for checking in with us and keeping us safe. Take care, everyone. We're adjourned.
Thank you.